Well, we do have the, on the 21st, we do have the blood drive. And then for every 10 employees, there'll be a donate drawing for $50 and stuff. We also have the maintain, don't gain coming up, November the 24th through January the 5th. I don't know if there's something else y'all want to add on to it, James or Nicole?
Other than, we would like as much participation from departments as we can get. We do have a few scales that can, that can be lent out to offices if they need them. And then, that's, that's really it. The blood drive is here in the parking lot on the 21st. So, we would like to have as many people participate in that as we can get. But that's really, that's really everything.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we need to receive our yearly report from Veterans Services. Okay, so Melissa, you're gonna have to explain carefully to all of us exactly what all this means.
Gotcha. So, there, since we have several new commissioners that haven't, haven't heard of commissioner or a report from the Veterans Office since you've been elected, this breakdown that I gave you, the main column that I want you to focus on is the compensation and pension column. It's actually collaboration of all of the benefits from our veterans, their dependents, surviving spouses. It's compensation benefits, dependency and indemnity is when there's a service connected death that the surviving spouse receives, pension benefits. This money is what, what comes into our veterans' hands, is able to spend that money in our county. So, it makes for that, a great economic benefit to our county to, for our veterans to have that assistance with their VA filing plans.
So, part of what Melissa does is she assists our veterans in receiving these benefits so that their quality of life remains as stable as possible. And so, the breakdown is basically the compensation and pensions that they receive, any vocational or rehabilitative assistance that they receive, insurance that they receive, medical services. And you'll notice that we have like, the peak in our numbers was around 2007, 2008, where we had over 5,000 residents that were, that were actually requesting assistance. So, it's not to say that, that every single veteran is going through her office. These are the veterans that are receiving assistance through her office. And so, it provides you with the totals. So, you have the medical services, which began in early 2000s, 2000s, and then the total benefits. And so, the total benefits for 2024 is $83,229,930.
Yeah, just for, for some stats on my office alone, for the 2024 year, I assisted 3,063 veterans and their families. This was by phone contact, email, in-person contacts. I receive a, a good number of, of calls on a regular basis. So far this year, through October, I've, I've had contact with 2,095 veterans and their families. I also brought some numbers on our grant, our Fund for Veterans Assistance Grant kicked off, and for the month of October so far, we had, we had assisted five veterans. And we assisted them out of the columns. We had a rent and mortgage that we had paid on, we had paid on utilities, and helped with the insurance, vehicle insurance for one of them. And, and that has picked up. So, every month is, we have more veterans that are getting, that are getting the word and are coming forward for some assistance with some emergency financial help.
Anybody have any questions?
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Melissa, appreciate it. Okay, all business. Approve the minutes from the previous meeting, October 14th, which is regular session. Copy of the minutes was provided for your review.
So moved, second.
For second. Did you get them?
Need a table, please.
Request a table again.
Okay, move, second.
Purvis Cassidy on, fair say aye. Have any opposed? Motion carries. New business consent agenda, you have addendums for FY 2025. Addendum number one, for the amount of $2,243,000, $2,243.13 for FY 2026, and the amount of $141,499.94. Is there anything else in the consent agenda that anybody wishes to pull?
Table number four.
Table number four.
No move.
Okay.
Second.
Table number four, which is the minutes again. So, we have a motion by Commissioner Purvis, second by Commissioner Dubos, all in favor say aye. Have any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, new business, which is your regular agenda. Item number 15A, consider approval of personnel matters as follows. Personnel action form request submitted by department head since the last meeting, and review of any authorized emergency hires. We included a preliminary listing of the PAFs in your packet, and there are no emergency hires.
Motion to approve.
A motion to approve, Mr. Dubos, Commissioner Robertson, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. 15B, discuss and consider request from Roden Bridge Precinct 3 to use discretionary funds for one-time bonus. Commissioner Purvis has requested this agenda item, and his letter to the court is included for your review. He's requesting approval to use discretionary salary fund to pay out one-time bonus to fund Robert Blakely in the amount of $1,500. He's reached step 16 on the pay scale and is ineligible for a step increase.
Some of that has less.
I'm assuming that's coming from you.
That lasts 13 months.
It's 1,300, okay, correct the amount to 1,300.
So moved.
Comes from Commissioner Purvis, second Commissioner Cassidy, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. 15C, discuss and consider request from Roden Bridge Precinct 4 to use discretionary funds for one-time bonus. Commissioner Cassidy has requested this agenda item, and his letter to the court is included for your review. He's requesting approval to use discretionary salary funds to pay out one-time bonus to fund Kayla Pitts in the amount of $1,732.80. She has reached step 16 on the pay scale and is also ineligible for a step increase.
So moved, second.
Commissioner Cassidy, Commissioner Dubos, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. D, Sheriff Lyons requests to give Chief Deputy Anthony Lowery a three-step discretionary increase for the county personnel policy. Discretionary increases exceeding two steps per year may be considered by the Commissioner Court on a case-by-case basis. A copy of Sheriff Lyons' request is included for your review, in which he justifies a three-step increase by stating that Chief Lowery's professionalism, leadership, and unwavering dedication to his department have established a standard of excellence unmatched by any other law enforcement administrator.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, Commissioner Dubos, second Commissioner Purvis, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 16, consider request for revisions and amendments to the budget as follows. The FY 2026 budget revisions as presented by the County Auditor's Office. A copy of the proposed revisions, number 2026-06, is included for your review.
No move.
All motion, Commissioner Purvis, second Commissioner Robertson, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 17, consider request for capital purchases to be paid from the general fund balance and included on the FY 2026 reimbursement resolution for year-end issuance of legally authorized debt as follows. A, the sheriff's purchase of laptop docking stations for vehicles from Cloud Tech Incorporated in the amount of $7,546. The court previously approved the purchase of aftermarket equipment for the sheriff's office vehicles as part of the enterprise lease agreement. However, the docking stations were not covered in that. So, although the docking stations were not included in the original capital purchase projections for the sheriff's budget request, they're essential for daily operations. Fortunately, the total of capital purchases at this time remain at approximately $100,000 below the original projections, which allows us flexibility to accommodate this expense. VTEC, Chief Lowery and Nicole Reeks selected VTEC through the county's by-board membership, and it offers the greatest value. A copy of their proposal is included for your review. I'll make the motion.
Second.
Motion, Commissioner Robertson, second Commissioner Dubos, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. 17B, acts on cameras, year two for the Polk County Jail in the amount of $49,439.10. Year two of the five-year agreement for the jail's body cameras was included on the capital purchase projection listing, and this amount matches the projection listing. As a reminder, for the terms of this agreement, all cameras will be replaced at the midterm and at the end of this agreement, in addition to the replacement of any cameras that may malfunction at any time during the five-year term. A copy of this year's invoice is included for your review.
So moved.
Second Commissioner Cassidy, Commissioner Robertson, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. 17C, acts on bounty cameras, year two for the Polk County Sheriff's Office in the amount of $53,844.77. Year two of the five-year agreement for the sheriff's body camera was included on the capital purchase projection listing, and this amount matches the projection listing. Basically, it's a repeat of what we were doing at the jail.
So moved, second.
Commissioner Purvis, Commissioner Cassidy, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 18, consider any and all necessary action relating to the purchase of 2020 Noram Motor Grader for Roden Bridge Precinct 1 in the amount of $96,122.50 with trade-in and financed over a four-year term to be paid from Precinct 1. Commissioner Robertson has requested this agenda item. The proposed finance term with Cadence Bank for the four-year terms are for 5.03%, resulting in four annual payments of $27,200.68. The final amount may vary slightly based on the actual interest rate at the time of closing. A copy of the finance agreement was included in your packet for your review. Commissioner Robertson, make the motion.
Second.
Second Commissioner Dubos, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Number 19, consider any and all necessary action related to bid number 2026-13 for the purchase of one motor grader for Roden Bridge Precinct 4. This bid packet was approved by the court on October 14th. All Commissioner Cassidy's request for the new, the equipment to be paid for from his fund balance, purchasing and procurement office received them by November 4th, and some, emailed the bid summary, and a copy is included for your review.
So moved.
Commissioner Cassidy, Commissioner Purvis, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 20, receive rating and recommendations from court-appointed scoring committee and consider any and all necessary action relating to the 2024 Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery Local Communities Program as follows. The deadline for the submission of qualifications and proposals was Friday, is Friday, November 7th, or was Friday, November 7th at 2:00 p.m. Commissioner Robertson, Courtney Comstock, Dave Sotozanti, and Jessica Hutchins met and reached to score the proposal, met and bringing the recommendation to the court. A, will select a grant administrator to assist the county in its application for an implementation of one or more contracts if awarded by the Texas General Land Office. Is Jessica here? Or are you gonna handle it?
Yes, but, yes.
Is Jessica here?
Well, Jessica's here maybe, but Waxman is here.
Okay, so, the recommendation is to go with Waxman?
Uh huh.
And that comes from that committee?
Yes.
You gonna lead the motion?
Yeah, I'll make the motion.
Thank you.
Commissioner Robertson, Commissioner Cassidy, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. B, is to select an engineering firm to assist the county in its applications and project implementation of one or more contracts if awarded by the Texas General Land Office. That comes from that same committee?
With Schaumburg and, and Pope, and I'll make the motion.
I got a question. Where are they from?
They're from Houston.
Anybody ever worked with them before?
A lot of places have. I don't know right off the top of my head, but we did re, do research. Cause that, we met as a committee.
So, you have the scores there as well?
Can I ask, babe?
Yes, ma'am.
Court. Well, I mean, the committee minutes, we scored. I know we have a good history with other engineers. So, if this is something anyone is hesitant on, because this is a large grant, and it's over the, it's similar to the grant we're working on now, it takes years to move forward with. So, if this is something that needs to be further researched, I want the court to be completely comfortable with us moving forward, because a lot of it is work on y'all's projects, a lot of it is training to work with these disaster recovery grants.
You certainly can look at the, at the data that they submitted to.
Yes, and that's what we had to base everything off of, was their, was their qualifications, their proposal.
I can't call from on tablet to napalm. How long they been doing this?
Many years. Right off the top of my head, I, I couldn't quote exactly how many, but they, they're not a startup company.
They have a very long history.
Yeah.
Plenty of counties and cities, or, yeah, lots of county work, because it's our focus, it's more county than city, and lots of federally funded grant programs, drainage work. I'm sorry, on 19, I didn't get who it was.
What's that?
On 19, I didn't get who it was.
Uh, 19?
Which, which company?
Was Commissioner Cassidy and then Purvis?
No.
Oh, which company?
Oh, on 19?
Who'd you buy it from? Henrichs?
Motor Grader.
Henrichs.
Yeah.
Henrichs.
Okay, thank you.
Well, if, if y'all are comfortable, we'll, we'll try them one time. Don't hurt the trial.
Hopefully two or three or four. I said hopefully we'll try them two or three or four if it works out.
I'm having a really good look with, with GLS right now too.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm, I'm struggling there. When does this have to be? When does this application have to be turned in? That's what.
We haven't even opened applications yet.
Cause we got to?
Yes, we do have time. And so, whenever we were scoring them, we were looking at drainage in addition, because the guidelines for this program hasn't been released yet. So, we were looking at all the diversity of projects that you have to work on. So, we, we included drainage, but infrastructure, water assistance, on-site sewer, any of the possibilities, that's what we were looking at when we were scoring those proposals. And they had an excellent proposal.
Let's table it, and y'all, and y'all send us the information, and we'll.
I was just saying, yeah, I'm sure Jessica can get you those, the books that we looked at that each.
Yes, ma'am. I mean, I'm not questioning y'all, but I mean, I'm just, they're, they're doing, you know, they've been, been good on this last GLO project, you know.
Okay, so, Jessica, send, send the other commissioners the information. Now, make sure that you all only respond to Jessica, so that we don't have a quorum. Okay, so, motion to table.
Second. I'm not questioning the committee, but I mean, I just, I mean, I'd like to see what makes y'all change y'all's mind.
And that's fair enough. Just use the data that, you know, that's.
And that's why we're here. Okay.
Who are we doing the second?
Purvis and Cassidy.
Okay.
Okay, 21, consider approval of revised Title VI nondiscrimination policy. There are several changes that have, have to be made, and they're all included in your packet for re, for your review. I, I don't think we need to read through all of them, but for compliance with the program specialists with TechStop's Civil Rights Division, they made some recommend, recommended changes. So, the current administration has rescinded executive orders 13166 and 12898, so they may be removed from the policy. They changed some appendices. They said that the complaints for the Title VI could only include race, color, or national origin. They, the updates have to be done in a minimum of three years, or when the person who signed the plan changes. The LEP Plan section must include some questions. The primary program description and review includes the departments, the Title VI concerns for each department, and the review procedures for those departments. With data collection and analysis, the section is very similar to the primary program, except you're looking for process to collect the data and the purpose. The environmental justice section, the current administration also rescinded things related to environmental justice. And so, you can, you can leave this section as it is, and that way, we don't have to delete that section. A notice of rights must be included. The complaint process, the current complaint process is not in alignment with Title VI processes. So, we have the current procedure written in our template, and we might want to include a section named Training, and discuss how and when employees will be trained to meet all the different expectations for this program. I know you all recognize that we actually assigned this to Carrie, and so Carrie has been, been doing all the training for the Civil Rights Division for, to comply with TechStop's requirements. Some of those requirements come down to TechStop from the federal government.
So, I'll, I'll make the motion, but also I'd like just to make a suggestion, that the next time something like this comes up, if, any place where there's changes that they could just highlight in yellow, and then that way, we could, or, you know.
Well, it, we haven't made the changes. We are telling you that this is what the recommendations are.
That's what I mean, the recommendation. You know, so, so it's for ease of, of looking what has been recommended.
Okay, but we haven't made them, that's my point. You will receive a red line like you normally do.
Okay.
That has the additions, which is what Carrie normally does. We're just telling you that this is what the recommendations, that, that they're going to be incorporated into the redraft, as long as you all agree to them. And if you have anything else you want us to add to it, then you need to let Carrie know, cause Carrie's.
What if we don't agree to?
Huh?
What if we don't agree to?
Well, then we won't be getting any TechStop funding.
Okay, well, I mean, that's, what I mean is, Kevin, no brain, what I'm saying, thinking, but.
Yeah.
I'm just curious, what if we didn't?
So.
They're pretty much telling us we do this or not.
Pretty much.
Okay.
I will know what.
Well, you are asking for their money.
Yeah.
Usually people that are giving you money want, want you to do what.
I'll make the motion, I'll second.
Okay, Commissioner Purvis, Commissioner Cassidy?
Ms. Galene had made the motion.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, yeah, yeah, well, I second Ms. Galene's, with, with her request.
Galene?
Yep.
Purvis, and we will get you the finalized version with.
But I think what she was saying was, when you send it to us, how are these changes gonna be?
That's what I'm asking, so.
Yeah, no, and that's what I'm saying, we'll, it'll go toward that way. It'll either be redlined or it'll be highlighted.
Highlighted, much kinder in general than redlined.
Well, redlined is what you deleted.
Yeah.
Highlighted is what you added.
That's true.
Yeah.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Uh huh.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number 22, discuss and consider approval to submit application to the Deep East Texas Council of Governments for the FY 2026 Solid Waste Grant. As of the time of the review, Cherie Pike and Carrie were finalizing the grant application. A copy was included for your review. And we need to know how the court would like to proceed.
So moved.
Second.
Like, no, no.
Second.
Commissioner Cassidy, uh, Commissioner Robertson, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, item number 23, receive presentation and discuss participation in the development of the 2028 Regional Flood Plan and methods to identify potential projects for consideration by the Regional Flood Planning Group, Trailer and Associates as part of the team of technical consultants that are assisting the NACUS and Sabine Regional Flood Planning Groups, and they are tasked with community outreach during the development of the 2028 Regional Flood Plan. So, they would like an opportunity to discuss it with the court. Also, a copy of the presentation has already been provided, and there's a copy in, in your packet. Yes, ma'am?
Good morning, Judge.
You wanna step up here so the mics will pick you up? Oh, never mind.
So, I'm Cheryl, I am with Trailer and Associates, and as she said, we're tasked with community outreach, and we're trying to make sure that everyone is understanding of the plan and what it involves, and that we need to, everybody needs to get their areas in the plan, or there is no funding for it. So, I'm gonna do a presentation, I don't wanna blind anybody.
Run, Cherie, run.
So, first, we're talking about the NACUS Regional Flood Planning Group here. So, what are regional flood planning groups? So, many of you may be familiar with them, but some of you might not have been around. Y'all need to scoop up your D C.
No.
Right. So, they were created in 2020. So, a quick and easy overview, there's 15 groups that are based on major watersheds in Texas, and each group is independent of one another, but there is liaison between some neighboring groups. They meet regularly to facilitate the objectives of the statewide flood plan. And the objective of each flood planning group is to carry out the responsibilities placed on the flood planning groups as required under Texas Water Development Board codes. You can see there, I'm not gonna labor that. The regional flood plan versus the state flood plan. So, basically, regional flood plans develop after, using the information and data obtained by you, city officials, stakeholders, county officials, flood planning group itself, and our currently adopted plans were approved in 2023. The state flood plan consolidates all the information out of all the different flood planning groups in the state into a single actionable plan to reduce the risk and impacts of future flooding. So, that current plan was approved in 2024, and we're now working on the 2028 plan. So, amendments were possible to each document, but there will be no more amendments allowed. So, if we get in any information that we want in the plan, we get that in now, because they're not gonna allow us to amend it. As you can see by this map, which is available on the Texas Water Development Board site, As you can see by this map, which is available on the Texas Water Development Board site, it has a great overview of all of the different flood planning groups, but particularly the NACIS. And you can drill down in this from the website and you can look at all different sorts of things. You can see the existing infrastructure, dams, levees, identify low-water crossings, et cetera, and view, even view models. So it's all pretty fancy stuff, but why do you care about that? Basically. Money is why you care about that and why we care about a lot of things. But obviously, also, we're talking about saving lives. We're talking about reducing high-water rescues, limiting damages to infrastructure and structures. And even though that's a primary goal, it still takes money to do that. So the Flood Infrastructure Fund is a program that's set aside for projects using these funds for local share of other funding. There are two rounds of fifth applications that have been released so far with 1.3 billion in project funding made available to Texas communities. They are in the form of flood mitigation evaluations, basically your studies, flood mitigation projects, which come out of those studies, and flood mitigation strategies, which would be things like polarity systems and low-water crossing signs and, and different things of that nature. So regardless of the funding category, projects have to be listed in the statewide flood plan to be considered for funding. So if y'all are wanting any sort of funding dealing with floods from the Texas Water Development Board, we need to make sure that we get that, those projects in this plan and announce the time that we're doing that. So many communities lack representation in the 2023 Regional and 2024 State Flood Plan for a variety of reasons. Some are, you know, staff turnover, maybe didn't know about it, misconceptions about what the program entailed, maybe your lack of funds for a match. But all of those things can be taken care of. But if we don't get those projects in the plan, there will be no opportunity for funding. So that's why we're here today to make sure that y'all understand, you know, the importance of that. Anyway, you cut the handout. So that all boils down to what opportunities are there. So that's why we're here. We're here to try to reach out to the communities and make sure, you know, that you're aware of these, make sure that you're aware that we need to get your project, potential projects into the plan. So think about what infrastructure you have, what's working, what's not working, what's ultimately needed to mitigate risks, and think big. Also, think small, though, because there's a lot of money for projects out there, especially to small rural communities. So if you have a study that you need done for your area, make sure that you get that in the plan. Although if you have a huge project that you think pie in the sky would never happen, but is something that you need in this area, be sure that you identify that as well because there are potential ways to get funding for that and you can to possibly get some match for those grants. So we need to make sure that we get those in there. So it all begins with completing that survey. And I passed out a little handout to you that's got a QR code on it. It's very simple. Scan that QR code. I also emailed, tried to email. I was able to get a couple of you. I think I got the judge and I think I got Galene and possibly Flare. It's like, it might be easier for you to do that on your computer with the code rather than using the QR code. But it'll work that way, too.
And all that might be one more thing. You have the code and you use it on the computer.
So the little. The little QR code that's on the top left. Yes, sir. You can scan that with your phone. And it'll take you to the site. And on that site, you can actually just basically drop a pin. Go through the little. You can, you can put a little dot on the map. That will show. We can help you. Thank you for. But you can put a little dot on that map to show where flooding areas are. And you can say what causes the flooding. Is it from upstream? Is it from just heavy rains? Is it from rains that occur once a year? Is it from rains that occur every six months? You know, you can get as detailed as you want, but as long as you put a pin on a dot on that map, you will get contacted by Freezing Nichols about what are you talking about? What project is this? What do we need to put in the state flood plan?
But I, I, I noticed, okay, that y'all, this is just for the NACIS region?
Yes, we also are doing Sabine. And Freezing Nichols is doing Sabine. I think Freezing Nichols is also doing Brazos, but they have hired somebody else for the Brazos area to do that.
Most of them are being the NACIS, the other guy. Those are gonna be in Trinity.
And, and that's fine. You can even put them on there for the Trinity. And you know that those, you know, exist. Because since they're, y'all are so close, you know? And you have large sheds in the county. Because it's important, no matter what, to get that in the state flood plan, whether it's Trinity or whether it's Palm County.
And, and we may need to kind of come up with a plan for, for this in terms of dropping pins and providing assistance.
That's gonna be, you can, you can get on the phone and get, then you get on the website to get on the computer.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And I did, I emailed that link to several of you. Did you get that, Galene?
I think I did.
Yeah. So that's probably easier way. Yeah, you can pull that up.
It sounds like.
Yeah. Because it's a whole lot easier to do, I think, on a computer. You can do it on your phone, but it's very small and you gotta wiggle in there. You're, you're trying to find little detailed areas to put a pin. So it's pretty easy to do on the computer, though. And you can even do like whole project areas. I don't wanna get too technical, but you can, you can draw a hologram on that map and do a whole project area if you wanna do that.
I think part of, part of it is like, right now, we are already moving towards a gauge system. And so we need to have a way of consolidating the information so that it's kind of all in one place. So my recommendation to the court is that you consider putting one more thing on emergency management.
I saw a bunch of places that flooded, just by part of you.
And we sent out a survey several months ago. We've actually sent it out twice to all the flood plane managers in the state, the emergency managers in the state. Generally, they went to the judges as well. And I, we tried to get court members, but I don't think all of you have a, they don't get email or I don't have a get email address for you guys. But that was a more technical survey that actually was pretty difficult. A flood plane manager should be able to complete that survey.
We don't have a flood plane.
Okay, so. And we sent out to emergency managers, too, though. So they may be able to do that. But I think it's gonna take, like you said, the consolidation of maybe all of you guys kind of getting together and saying, these are the areas that we think, you know, we have, we know we have problems in when it comes to flooding or, like I said, water coming from upstream or, or even water that you know is going downstream that's affecting somebody, flooding houses, flooding buildings, whatever the case may be. It may just be street flooding, but that's important, too. I happen to know, we've got a condo up here, so we've been through here when the street flooded. So I know that you have street flooding rights down in this area.
Yes, yes.
So I would definitely put that on the map. So anything, and I'll be happy to help in any way. Y'all can always call me. I can kind of walk you through it if you get lost on it.
So are you making this presentation to the cities as well?
We're trying to make it to as many people as we possibly can, as many.
Okay, well, I would, I would definitely recommend that you contact the cities and visit with them.
Yes.
Because the Shokes Creek flooding is in their jurisdiction.
Well, and it doesn't matter really what jurisdiction. You don't have to stay with them.
I'm, I'm not saying it does.
Yeah.
I'm saying we, it's confusing if we're submitting data and they don't know about it or vice versa.
You're right.
So I would suggest that we contact all the cities.
Yes, yeah, we have. We've, we've sent out emails and talked to people. We went to Dead Cod. We're trying, you know, to, to go to everybody that we can possibly get to to try to explain, you know, why it's so important. And it's important to get all of that, all of those things fixed as much as possible. Obviously, the state's not gonna do every project that's put forth, but there are a lot of viable projects in this area and we wanna make sure that they at least get considered by the state.
I think we have, we've provided some of this information to some of our water districts. You sound like to some of our utility areas.
Yes, ma'am. And again, we've, we've amounted all of them as well. I think that, and there could be some confusion and could be why we're not receiving some of the feedback we'd like to, is that maybe, like you said, the county doesn't wanna put it on the map because it belongs to the city. The city maybe doesn't wanna put it on the map because maybe the water district's more involved. So therefore, nothing's getting put, you know, on the maps. And that's unfortunate because we wanna make sure we get everything that we can on it.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, well, we, we do have contact information for the cities.
Okay.
Might be something that for the, for us to include the volunteer fire departments.
Yeah, I'd say the more people we include, the better, yeah.
Okay, and we'll just coordinate it all through emergency management.
Yes, ma'am.
Anybody have any more questions?
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. We just want, we don't want anybody to get left out. That's the main thing, you know?
We don't either.
No. You wanna be eligible for this funding, because there is a lot of money, as we know, we just voted on, a big, you know, ton of money to come down and that's what that money's gonna be used for. So we wanna make sure, you know, the state's as resilient as possible when it comes to this.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Appreciate it.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion to adjourn. Commissioner Purvis, Commissioner Cassidy.